Festerson, Garnett, Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson. Mr. President.
Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Gary Garnett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good meeting. Amen.
City Clerk, certified publication of Lady Wreckup's Official Newspaper on October 14th in North River Council and regular city council meeting October 18th, 2016. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of Omaha City Council. My colleagues and I thank you for being, for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices.
You're not on.
I'm not on. My mic's not on. Let me try that again. The city council, good morning, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. My colleagues and I thank you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, would you please turn off or mute any cellphone or electronic devices? Before we begin today, a couple of my colleagues, Councilman Dr. Thompson and Councilmember Gary Garnett, we had the opportunity to meet with and share some thoughts and stories with a group of students who are from 10 Southeast Asian countries who are here for a visit. They've been here for four weeks. Val McPherson is there, is kind of shepherding them around a little bit, and I'd like for them to extend their big knowledge, please. They also had an opportunity to hear me in rare form last night at our town hall meeting. So hopefully they'll be back after that. And they still came. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final reading Plan Board attachments, item number five, ordinance to rezone property located at 151 North 46th Street from General Industrial District to R8 High Density Malt Final Residential District, a planning board and planning department recommend approval, and six is ordinance to approve a planned unit redevelopment overlay district at that property, a planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers five and six are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 1144 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, really here to answer any questions. If you recall, we went through this project pretty extensively on the redevelopment plan a couple of weeks ago. So with that, in the essence of time, we'll answer any questions or respond to any opposition if there is any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, if someone can, from the city, city traffic engineering could come, or...
He's here.
One of the questions that arose since the last meeting at a town hall meeting was whether the traffic study had been completed and whether there were any changes that need to be made, and if so, what those were, so...
Good afternoon. Murthy Coty, city traffic engineer with Public Works Department. A traffic study was completed by the development team and submitted to the city. The city staff did have a chance to review the traffic study, and we developed comments, a few comments. Fundamentally, we concur with the recommendations of the traffic study. Our comments will not basically make any changes to the conclusions of the report. But the traffic study did not identify any major capacity issues. It concluded that the existing roadway infrastructure is adequate to handle the additional trips from the proposed development. The one recommendation it did make was to stripe the eastbound left turn lane at California in Saddle Creek intersection to extend the length of it. That's the only recommendation that was made from the traffic study, which we have no issues implementing as the development progresses. But other than that, you know, we agree with the recommendations that the existing transportation system, the roadway infrastructure, is quite adequate to handle it.
Well, that was, the traffic study was the one remaining last thing that the neighborhood brought up in terms of movement of vehicles and parking of vehicles, and you're satisfied that you're looking at it, that it won't be an issue for the neighborhood.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. This is a $40 million project that has, I believe, 430 or 420 fewer units than allowed by the R8 zoning for the area, and it involved at least five, this may be the sixth, public hearing on the project. So I want to thank the development team from Augusta for not only meeting with the city, meeting with the council, meeting with the neighborhood association leaders, then a general neighborhood association meeting, a public meeting, the planning board meeting, and now two meetings here to ultimately shape what this project looks like. It's going to be, I'm told, the highest rents per square foot in the city, certainly in the eastern part of the city, and it'll be a major improvement. So I'm pleased to support it and would make the motion approve.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Those were the remaining questions I had too about the traffic study, so I'm also supportive and seconded the motion. And we've spent some time, a lot of time, as Councilman Jerem mentioned, about the appearance and the design and the landscape in which we appreciate the work done on that. I also just want to thank Public Works for the resurfacing that just happened right there, from 46th to 49th Street, Underwood to Saddle Creek. That'll be of great benefit to the product, too. With that, there's been a motion and a second. I think Mr. Garnett.
Thank you. Mr. Garnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been pushing the request to speak button here, but it must have succumbed to some of the political sabotage that's going around in this country. You're probably wondering why someone from southeast Omaha District Four wants to speak on this project at 48th and Dodge. I have a constituent that owns several pieces of property in that particular area and is adamantly against this project. I hope that individual's watching today to hear what the traffic department has said in regards to the amount of traffic, because that was the concern that was echoed to me. And I have to tell you, from a watching an area, I guess, decay would be a favorable word, and then to have an almost impossible site to build something on and have a plan brought forward to revitalize an area. I thought it was tough when they did a landfill down at 17th and Q Street. I thought, it could never happen. Well, we have 48 beautiful units down there that are fully occupied. Here we have at 48th and about Dodge Street, an opportunity to get some high-end living units in a beautiful setting, and they're going to be marketed to high-end individuals, possibly working at, on the medical center campus. So it's not going to be some of the negative images that are made applicable to other projects that have come before us over, over the years. And I, too, am pleased, and will be supporting this based upon, after we've heard from, from traffic department, that they've approved this, the traffic study that was submitted. And I'm glad that that process has occurred, because I think it's eased some embers that were starting to get a little brighter and a little hotter in that area. So with that, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson.
I didn't know mine was on. I think the buttons are acting up.
Okay.
We were doing test buttons, so we were pushing our buttons, so they must be working now.
Okay, so now you're...
You can cancel me.
Cancel you as well, okay.
It was one of Gary's...
Okay. So we know who to blame it on. Let me not lose control. Items five and six have been, there's been a motion and a second, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson, Garnett, Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Five and six are passed, seven to zero. Resolutions, preliminary plat, plats and subdivision agreements, item number seven, resolution of preliminary plat entitled Becky's located northeast of 168th Street and Rachel Snowden Parkway along with attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized, a planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, thank you. Pat Hillier, 14710 West Dodge Road, representing the applicant. We've met with staff on this, and we agree with all their items, and we're working forward to getting this approved, and I'm here to answer any questions if there's anything.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call, no lights.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul, Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven is adopted, seven to zero. Item number eight, resolution of the preliminary plat entitled Waters Edge located northwest of 195th and Harrison Street along with attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized, a planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item eight, there are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Nine is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to city council rule 7E, agenda items, item number 10 shall be laid over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Pursuant to city council rule 7E, agenda items 11 through 12 shall be laid over two weeks. Pursuant to city council rule 7E, agenda item number 13 shall be laid over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Liquor, item number 14, Flames Restaurant, 1620 Harney Street, Class C liquor license application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, sir.
Hi.
Good afternoon. Yes, I'm the owner of the restaurant, Flame Restaurant, and I just requested for the get, to try to get a liquor license.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Is 1620 Harney Street.
And your name?
My Tony Shane.
Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item 14, there are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
14 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 15, RZ's Poop Deck, 6006 Grover Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old locations, change of stockholders.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ben Pick, 10250 Regency Circle, Suite 300, on behalf of RZ's Inc., doing business as RZ's Poop Decking.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item 14, there are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
14 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 16, old, and 17, we'll take those two together, Old Fashioned Garden Cafe, 11040 Oak Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location, and 17 is the same applicant, same location for catering liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 16 and 17 are today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, council, thank you for having us. Brent Ganey, 11040 Oak Street, Garden Cafe.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Paul.
I have two things to say to your rent. I go to your restaurant quite often. Number, let me see, it must have been last Sunday, I had to stand in line a long time because you're so busy. I just want you to straighten that out, okay?
We'll get a booth reserved for you, sir.
Okay. But another thing I want to thank, he does allow me to spend many of my meetings with my constituents out in his, in his cafe without charging me rent, and I do appreciate that. So I still move.
It's moved and seconded to approve items 16 and 17, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
16 or 17 are adopted, seven to zero. Item number 18 is Omaha Tap House, 579 and 583 North 150th Plaza, Class C liquor license, new application, new location. You have communications from the applicant requesting an amendment to delete the outdoor area, and you have communications opposing.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Matt Lettner, one of the owners.
Naomi Burke, 17142 L Street, Omaha.
Brian Musser, 16123 Parker Street, Omaha, current general manager.
Okay, and you're here just to answer questions, or did you want to make a statement?
Yes, no question.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment.
Yep.
Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18 is adopted as amended, seven to zero. Item number 19, Marsareal's Italian Market, 2821 South 108th Street, package liquor license application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Ethel Merriman. I'm with Mareska's Italian Market, and we're located at 2821 South 108th, and I'm here to apply for a liquor license for a package only.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a quick question.
Sure.
Since this is a new establishment in the Rock Brook area...
Yes, yes.
I know we have two of you today from the Rock Brook area. Why don't you just sort of describe what this is about? Because this is an Italian market.
We're opening an Italian market in Delhi. We will have hot entrees, we will have Italian liquor, Italian wine, beer, if so approved today. All carryout, all of our food is carryout, but we'll have a full line of Delhi and as well as prepared entree items.
Well, thank you. So move.
And grocery, dry goods, Italian, Italian market. I just spent a month in Italy finding vendors for all kinds of little things, so I'll be importing a lot of things.
Well, great, that sounds good.
It's moved and seconded to approve item 19, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
19 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 20, The Beercade at 6102-6104 Maple Street, request permission for an addition to their present Class C liquor license in an outdoor area to the north and to add the trade name St. Andrews Pub.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, I'm John Larkin from 6104 Maple Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to recognize Mr. Larkin here, who's the current chair of the Benson Business Improvement District for all his efforts with that, and wanted to give him a chance to talk about his latest project here a little bit, if you want, the expansion of St. Andrews right on the corner there.
Sure, thanks, councilman. I appreciate that. Yeah, we've just celebrated our 10-year anniversary in Benson with Jake Cigars, and St. Andrews and Beercade were our second and third projects here. So we've acquired another building, which we were able to, well, was unable to improve, so we had to tear it down, and we're doing a large patio for St. Andrews, adding more outdoor space in what is already, in my opinion, the best nightlife district in Omaha, so no offense to the rest of the council.
Great districts.
Yeah, you want a positive vote here.
A great place to see a soccer game, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And you're going to repaint the mural, right, on the side of the building?
We will be repainting the mural.
Excellent.
Get on that guy.
All right, perfect. That's a popular thing. Motion approved.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve item 20, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
21 is approved, seven to zero. Item number 22, Alley V at 3375 Oak View Drive, request permission to appoint Stephen Sempek manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Steve Sempek, 4105 South 173rd Street in Omaha, representing Alley V for approval for me to be the manager of the premises and on the liquor license.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Garnett.
Steve, you were just here recently, weren't you? A familiar face from 25th and Bancroft.
I'm kind of like, I'm kind of like the Restaurant Impossible and Bar Rescue guy, but I do it with bowling centers, so, and family entertainment centers, and Immaculate Conception, the Rec Center, and the Bowling Center is doing great, and we've got that moving, and the parish is doing wonderful and expanding, and the Rec Center is doing a great job, so I moved on to help these gentlemen, try to reinvigorate, reinvigorate their family entertainment center. I think it's got great opportunity, and just trying to create more family options for people, but this time in west Omaha. But it's great to be a south Omaha and see a fellow south Omaha fellow.
Nice points. Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve item 22, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
22 is approved, seven to zero. Item number 22, Alley V at 3375 Oak View Drive, request permission to appoint Steven Sempek manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Steve Sempek, 4105 South 173rd Street in Omaha, representing Alley V for approval for me to be the manager of the premises and on the liquor license.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Garnett.
Steve, you were just here recently, weren't you? A familiar face from 25th and Bancroft.
I'm kind of like, I'm kind of like the Restaurant Impossible and Bar Rescue guy, but I do it with bowling centers, so, and family entertainment centers, and Immaculate Conception, the Rec Center, and the Bowling Center is doing great, and we've got that moving, and the parish is doing wonderful and expanding, and the Rec Center is doing a great job, so I moved on to help these gentlemen, try to reinvigorate, reinvigorate their family entertainment center. I think it's got great opportunity, and just trying to create more family options for people, but this time in west Omaha. But it's great to be a south Omaha and see a fellow south Omaha fellow.
Nice points. Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve item 22, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
22 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause an item placed on consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council may be following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearing, public hearings on agenda items numbers 23 through 26 were held on October 4th, 2016.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moving seconded to approve, no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
23 through 26 are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 27 through 47 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Moving seconded to approve items 27 through 47, no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
22 is approved, seven to zero. Orderance on final reading, item 48, ordinance to amend, or Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter Chapter eleven, by adding a new Article ten entitled Mobile Food Vendors to Regulate and Require License for Mobile Food Vendors. A is a document submitted by Mike Moreland, B is communications opposing, C is an amendment from the administration.
The public hearing on agenda item number forty-eight has been continued. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office. Before you today is a longcoming ordinance that we've been working on with the food trucks. Hopefully some of you were able to enjoy those that were out in front of City Hall today. But the ordinance in front of you, yes, Councilman Grenat, I did see you out there as well. The ordinance in front of you today is really the rules and regulations of how food trucks would operate within the city of Omaha. This is something we've been working on, like I said, for some time now. We've had lots of conversations with the food truck vendors themselves. We've looked at what other communities are doing. I know some of you have asked about that. I do have additional information on that. If you would like that, I can certainly hand that out. But we've had a lot of different conversation about distance, hours of operation, what makes sense. And I would tell you, we feel that the ordinance that is in front of you is one that is fair, that is balanced, and it is crafted to really be that base ordinance as to where we see operations of this growing industry within our city and it's business friendly. Three weeks ago, the administration, we did ask for a layover. At that time, we asked for a layover to seek additional input and feedback. I believe you'll be hearing from some of other folks that helped participate in having some of those discussions. We listened to those individuals. We did ask for anybody that had specific feedback to give us that in writing and let us know. We did propose an amendment that would add two additional things to the base ordinance itself. It would not change anything within the ordinance that is in there, but those amendments would include the ability for special districts or special zones to be created if a business improvement district or a neighborhood association would bring forth an application to the city as well as automatically have an annual review of the ordinance. So as the industry grows and changes, as we see things that might happen, we can kinda keep on top of it and move forward with any potential changes that there would possibly be in the future. You're gonna hear from a lot of people. I'm happy to answer any questions about the ordinance itself, how we arrived at any of the items within the ordinance such as application fees, distance from brick and mortar restaurants, hours of operation, or anything else that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Holly Barrett, Executive Director of the Omaha Downtown Improvement District. My address is fourteen oh three Farnham, number eight oh two. It's always a pleasure to be here. Thanks for having me. Forgive me, I normally speak a little bit off the cuff, but this was an important one and I wrote down all of my comments. Okay. The Omaha Downtown Improvement District fully embraces the new food truck culture. We see the number and diversity of mobile food vendors as a measure of success of the increasing vibrancy that we work so hard to promote in our urban community. Because our organization is funded by mandatory assessments of all properties, our mission requires us to advocate for all constituents in our district, whether they be residents, small business tenants, or major corporate landowners. To that end, my board, my pedestrian amenities and activation committee, and I, have spent the last year working directly with the wide variety of stakeholders from the mobile food vendors, the bricks and mortar restaurants, and the other residents and businesses that make up the fabric of our downtown neighborhood. We've helped the mobile food vendors identify food deserts within our district and we've successfully used the newly formed Omaha Food Truck Association to activate one of downtown's most inactive public spaces, the Jean Lahey Mall entrance plaza. We use the weekly street food fair that has brought eight to fifteen food trucks each Thursday this summer and has attracted a growing crowd each week. We also had many one-on-one meetings with bricks and mortar restaurants, with the members of the Old Market Business Association, with the Business Improvement District, which is our governing board, with residents, and with downtown mixed-use developers. We held a public meeting on September twenty-second where twenty-four attendees shared their thoughts with us, and on October fourth, we were given time at the Old Market Business Association's monthly membership meeting where we collected feedback in writing from over thirty businesses. Through this public outreach process, we've identified both the positive aspects of a more diverse economy and the potential negative effects that sometimes occur during a shift in how people perceive and use the public realm. We've collected a wide array of opinions and desires and have attempted to communicate the assorted and often contradictory ideas to the mayor's office, the city attorneys, the food trucks, and all those involved in crafting the ordinance. We're happy to say that with a few reservations about some details in the amendments, that we're in support of the proposed ordinance. Regulating this quickly expanding industry will give food trucks the governance and the direction they desperately need while protecting the delicate balance of commercial and residential needs in downtown Omaha. We feel it's important to speak on behalf of the public by saying that we heard across the board emphatically that the food trucks need to be required to pay either the restaurant tax or an otherwise equitable fee structure. We also heard loud and clear from the food truck vendors themselves that they would like to level the playing field in order to be considered legitimate purveyors of hospitality services, and we certainly heard the same from their competitors in the bricks and mortar venues. The originally proposed ordinance meets the needs of the mobile food vendors but seems to lack enough restrictions to satisfy some of our important residents and commercial venues. While most tenants in the entertainment district do feel adequately protected by the fifty-foot rule as proposed simply because of the density of the venues, several residential and bricks and mortar voices called adamantly for the creation of zones that would include authorizing food trucks to park within specific areas at specific times depending on the activation and safety needs of that specific area. We met further with these stakeholders to help craft potential additional language that would help make the ordinance more compatible with the desires of the community, and we believe that the subsequent ideas from those meetings are largely presented to you today in the form of both of the proposed amendments. We now ask that our elected officials in city council conscientiously consider both of these amendments, have thoughtful discussion, and come up with a centrist solution that will create a more level playing field for the businesses and will protect the needs of our diverse community. Therefore, we support the creation of a representative committee to oversee and review the ordinance as well as create zones in areas needing economic activation. We also support the concept of leveling the playing field through a more equitable fee structure. Again, we believe the two proposed amendments provide you with a range of ways to accomplish this task, though neither is a perfect fit, one not being strong enough, the other being burdensome. We firmly believe this exciting emerging industry will positively contribute to the urban scene in our city, and we sincerely hope that our leadership will be able to compromise today and craft leadership that will serve the needs of our diverse business community while also protecting the ever-expanding residential density in our neighborhood. I have lots of statements given to me from the public and I'm happy to answer any of those questions. I have letters from the BID as well. I'll be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, members of the council. My name is Scott Sheehan, twenty-two thirty-six South Twentieth Street. I am the youngest grandson of Tony Piccolo, Piccolo, the founder of Piccolo's Restaurant here in South Omaha. My family has been operating our business out of a brick and mortar location since nineteen twenty-two. We reside at twenty-two oh two South Twentieth Street, and I am a food trucker. I currently run my business with, which is Anthony Piccolo's Mobile Venue out of the restaurant's commercial kitchen. We share space there with the Big Green Q and other local food truck. I started thinking about food trucks as a potential business about seven years ago. I knew the paradigm was shifting in the restaurant industry in Omaha. I mean, it was relevant at the restaurant. In order to extend the family's business and the legacy of my grandfather, you know, we knew we had to evolve. After participating in things like Taste of Omaha, we traveled to Los Angeles, California, Phoenix, Arizona. We went down to Atlanta, Georgia, and kind of just was exposed to the food truck community there and see how, you know, what the culture was like there. We found it was, you know, a very progressive way to maybe expand our business here. I joined the Omaha Food Truck Association to start to grow my business. I have the honor of sitting on the board as the vice president of the association. This gives me a unique look at the food truck culture here in Omaha. I started meeting fun, like-minded people with dreams and aspirations of running, you know, successful food truck operations just like me. We started sharing ideas. We facing, we're facing many challenges today, and we work side by side, you know, coming up with ways to help each other, taking care of what we see as something very important. Most of the trucks are small, family-owned businesses. It's run by fathers and sons, mothers and daughters. We look, we look out for each other. We're a group of strong individual businesses, you know, trying to work together to build something positive for the city. We all have worked very hard to create a high standard for our operators to work under, which we fully intend to maintain and build on as the food truck movement expands. We have formed a partnership, which I'm really excited about, with the city of Omaha, the Downtown Street Fair, which has been a wonderful experience thus far. The support from the city of Omaha, the downtown business community has been excellent. We are definitely finding our niche down there with the on-the-go or eat-at-your-desk kind of client. The event is really building some positive momentum for the food truck culture here in Omaha. We have seen attendance grow each week. Feedback from the customers has been very encouraging, which I believe is important in developing a true city experience. So thank you for the city of Omaha for the opportunity to do that. In closing, I would like to say I feel the people of Omaha are embracing the food truck business in another step forward in the growth of our beloved Omaha and looking forward to being a part of it for years to come.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Kevin Wyatt, owner of Big Green Q Food Truck. You probably saw the rather subtle green truck out front today. I moved to Omaha in nineteen eighty-nine to work for Garden Cafe, and my wife and I were on the five-year plan. We figured we'd be in Omaha five years and be gone. We fell in love with Omaha, raised a family, and been here ever since. Anyway, we started a food truck business this last year because we thought Omaha needed a food truck culture, and we thought this was a place, you know, that we wanted to start a business. No offense to anybody age-wise, I hadn't eaten in food trucks much and didn't really understand the intrigue of food trucks. But as I traveled around like Scott did, I found that the younger people not only like food trucks, but they expect food trucks in their city. And ultimately, you guys have a choice to make this either easier for us or stifle our growth at some point in time. So one of the things that, or several things that I need you to understand about food trucks is, I assume you all have spouses and significant others. Let's just imagine for a moment that you're going out for an eating occasion and you're planning on going out for dinner, and you tell your significant other you're going out for dinner, and they expect you're going to a restaurant, and you end up in front of a food truck. It's probably not going to work out so well for you, and vice versa. Let's say you have a job where you're expected to go grab lunch and be back at your desk in thirty minutes, and you go to a sit-down restaurant and it's an hour and fifteen minutes and you walk back in and go, you know, that's, that's all I could do. The eating occasions for restaurants and food trucks are completely different, and I think that's something we, if you talk to people, they're like, well, you're taking money out of restaurants' pockets. We're not. We are another form of a quick place for people to eat. We're also an incubator for new businesses. If you go to most other cities, food trucks have started off as food trucks and turned into brick and mortar restaurants. It happens all the time. So this is a place where somebody can get in. Now realize, we're paying rent, we're paying taxes, we're doing all of that stuff already anyway. We're paying employees, we're, we're businesses that are growing, and we need an environment where you can help us grow. And too-long distances from restaurants, doors are too restrictive of rules and regulations are not gonna be to our benefit. Having said that, I realize that there's some pressure to have fair rules for everybody. One of the rules that is in your, that is in the regulations that I've seen is that we're not allowed in angled parking spaces. Is that correct? Do we agree on that? So there's, that essentially moves us out of certain areas in the Old Market right off the bat. If we need to be in a parallel parking space, then there are several blocks in downtown Omaha that we just can't beat. And for somebody to be worried about us being a food truck out in front of their venue when they're not even going to have parallel parking places in front of their venue, doesn't make any sense. And we can go back to the fact that food trucks and restaurants are both serving food but are two very different eating occasions, whether it's a quick lunch. I managed to work one of those lovely late nights with my food truck crew this summer, so we pulled up the truck in front of the hive at eleven o'clock and we fed people until three in the morning. From twelve to two, we fed mostly people who had had a cocktail or two. From two to three, we fed people that worked in restaurants downtown. By two-ten, there are no longer people who are down there who've been partying. Now you have the people that worked in a restaurant, they're tired, they don't want to eat the food that the restaurant has, and hey, there's an option outside, there's a food truck outside. So to restrict our work times and our places is going to make it seem as though Omaha is not focused on, on what the future of people want. One other thing that I thought was pretty interesting, this summer I was explaining to somebody that we were doing food, that we had started a food truck, and they said, "Oh yeah, you know, we were in St. Louis last week and we had food truck." I said, "You had what?" They said, "We had food truck." I said, "You mean you ate at food trucks?" "Yeah, that's what we did." That's what the youth of this country is calling food truck. It is, it's an noun. It's, it's something that they go and have, and it's something that they expect that a city our size has. I travel for seven states for my territory for my other job. Wichita has a much stronger food truck culture in a much smaller city. Yeah, they've got a little bit better weather and they got started a little bit earlier. But it's something that you guys, I hope, will help us take care of to make this easier for us. And keep in mind that underneath every one of our food trucks is a set of wheels, and if this doesn't work here for us, we may not stay, and that's not what we want. We all love Omaha, and the reason, that's the reason we started this business here. So glad to answer any questions, too.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
I'm Brandon Hahn with La Casa Pizzeria, forty-four thirty-two Leavenworth, and I'm also the, on the board of directors of the Omaha Food Truck Association. I just wanted to address the city council today to kind of explain what food trucks are about and, you know, why, why the city needs them. I had mentioned that I'm with La Casa Pizzeria. We've been around for a long time, since nineteen fifty-three, and over that time, we've watched our demographic slowly get older, and now they're literally dying. And we see that replacing them is this new millennial culture that's moving in, and if we want those people to stay, we, we need to have food trucks in this town. People like other people have said, people expect it these days. And we are a brick and mortar restaurant. We saw the different, the demographic that wasn't being, that we weren't reaching with our, our restaurant. It's, it's, it's so different that, you know, having a brick and mortar just wasn't enough. We saw the movement that was going on and we wanted to get ahead of it, and we've seen great success with it. It reaches people that normally wouldn't be able to get to our restaurant in time or are just out late, need a, need a bite to eat before they go home. And just like, there's been a lot of talk about fairness and a level playing field for everyone, which we want. We want to be treated like, you know, any other business operating in this town. And in order to do that, you have to think about scale, 'cause yeah, it's a lot cheaper to buy a food truck and build it than it is to rent or buy a building and build a restaurant in it. But if you look at the amount of sales that we do and our margins and our, our costs, it's all relative. It's, it's the same, we work on similar margins, if not thinner, than brick and mortar restaurants do. We pay utilities, we pay gas, we pay everything, and we bring in a lot less money. So whatever people say about us poaching or, you know, changing the paradigm, as I've heard a couple of times, it's out of necessity. We didn't change it. Somebody else did, and now we're adapting to it like a good business should, and our food speaks for itself, and basically if restaurants want to survive, their food has to be good. Food trucks want to survive, their food has to be good. And all the other competition factors are relevant, but not necessarily the determining factor for whether a restaurant stays open. Just because a couple of food trucks show up downtown and a restaurant goes out of business, it doesn't mean it had anything to do with us, correlation and causation are not necessarily the same thing. Just in closing, I support the ordinance that was drafted with the mayor's office and the Food Truck Association, just because I feel it has the best balance of fairness for brick and mortars who have a legitimate concern for their business as business owners, just like everyone else does, and the food trucks who, like Scott and Kevin both said, they're families, they're groups of people who show up to work every day and bust their humps, just like everybody else does, and they're just trying to get by. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
I'll back. Clean up. Kelly Keegan, forty-six fifty-five Hickory, owner of Chicago Dog House and president of the Omaha Food Truck Association. I'm not gonna reiterate what we've heard from these gentlemen so far. When we started this endeavor, I went to a city council and then asked, what's the best way to do this? And they told me, bring the council a solution and not a problem. And so we started at the get-go to work with the downtown Business Improvement District, with the Old Market, to figure out what needed to be in this ordinance to make it fair, to make a level playing field. And I really think that we've gotten there. We had our concessions, we're good with the two amendments that are tied to this legislation, and as a group, we do support it as it is submitted today. I do want to thank the city and our Councilman Thompson, Councilman Grenat, who sat on the committee. I know a lot of time was put in to looking at thirty different cities to see, you know, what are good laws, what are the good things we want out of this one, what are the bad things we don't want out of this city? And I'm very happy with where we're at so far. And with that, I'll answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. My name is Carl Estwick, senior, twenty-ten Ames Avenue. I'm the owner of Smoking Guns Barbecue. I've seen a lot of amazing things, quite as, not as old as more people, but that the city has grown. I think one of the things that our city is gonna grow even farther with the food trucks, the late-hour nights, a lot of people are out, a lot of people coming into the city and to our place. They want that extra taste or that late-night food. As we know, most of the restaurants close eleven or twelve o'clock, besides IHOP or something like that, in our downtown business. So we're really needed. We all want to be here. We want to do a good job for our city, and that's basically all we're asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
I've said it frequently during these discussions, that, you know, no matter what I do, in this case, somebody that I represent isn't going to be happy, because I represent most of downtown and deal with the people who have invested tens of millions, up to hundreds of millions, in their bricks and mortar and trying to revitalize the downtown. Represent people who own restaurants, people who own food trucks, people who own both. And Mr. Keegan, as a neighbor and friend of mine, is very, very wise. He probably, I'm guessing, maybe talked to my wife and said, "If you want to get to Chris, go to his stomach," because he's brought some of my favorite places to eat here today. I go to Chicago Dog regularly before Creighton games, and we go to La Casa regularly. I used to go to Piccolo's for the roast beef, and can't wait to try Kevin Wyatt's barbecue. So, certainly good people, good operators, wonderful entrepreneurs, and a emerging business that we want to foster in our city to attract and retain the youngest talent that we have. But we have to do so in a way, I'm hearing from those in the bricks and mortar world, that they feel is more balanced. So, we had this original approach, which a lot of hard work went into by probably the youngest workhorse in this whole thing, has been Cassie Pavin over here, because she's the laboring ore for the administration on this effort, as well as the food trucks. And I think that there's been significant strides made towards ultimately getting a resolution. I just think that there's still enough pushback that in the sentiments of what I'm hearing from significant people downtown is, there's a little bit more work to do. And we were kicking it around this morning at one of our committee meetings, and another council member said, "Well, maybe what they ought to do is, they ought to get together and go over to see Mike Mullen over across the street and sit down for a few hours and see if they can get the last piece of this across the finish line and a mediation between the sides, rather than have us solve it for you and make probably both sides dissatisfied to one extent or another." So, that's a thought out there. Because, in essence, what I've heard from them is, if you talk the distances, you're never going to make anybody happy. If it's over 50 feet, the food trucks are upset. If it's under 100 feet, the bricks and mortar are upset. If it's not in zones, which I thought was a good idea, then I'm wondering whether that's the right way to go or not. So, maybe it's, what size of a zone should you have? How zones should work? Who should have input in that process? All these things that I think have come up as a result of the proposals that have been put forward, but if we were to vote today, I don't know as proposed to me that we're across the finish line in a way that is maybe not going to make everyone happy, but a way that everybody will find palatable. So, what I would like to see happen is that we lay this over for another few weeks. I don't see why we should rush this through. The rules aren't being enforced right now anyway, there's no tickets being issued, from what I've been told. I did look out the window today to see the temporary zone that was set up, and I thought, hmm, maybe they're telling me they do like the zones, because there were bagged meters with the place where the food trucks could set up, even though there was one facing the wrong way on Farnham. It seemed to be a nice location. And then it got me thinking, well, maybe this is another way to do it these times. Maybe there's temporary zones that could be, where your association could ask for setup. So, I just thought, why are we rushing when this is such an important thing to your industry and to people who are on the bricks and mortar side, when there's still, I think, a little work left to be done, in my view? Maybe others don't view that way. But I would like to see the group come to an agreement, if possible, among each other, and to give that opportunity, a chance to succeed before we do the final version and votes on amendments, some that may be offered, others that may not be offered, but certainly put out there for discussion. Because you're all reasonable people, and that's why you're so successful in the businesses that you've had, is that you're not only innovative, but you're bright and hardworking. So, that's kind of what my thoughts are as we sit here today.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I agree with all the testifiers here today that food trucks are an important part of our urban fabric and our quality of life, and I've said from the start that we need to create a welcoming environment for them, and to make sure we don't overregulate how they operate through the city and can be successful. Almost every testifier also said, though, we need to strike the right balance, and I think that's an important word, to balance, as to how we do this. And although a lot of the conversation has focused on the downtown business district, the central business district, we also need to make sure we're thinking about how it supplies throughout the city, and especially in our other neighborhood business districts that do have lots of food trucks and enjoy them, like Benson, Dundee, Blackstone, Florence, and others. So, I've been vetting each proposal with them as they came along, and I am interested in the new amendment just today, we were briefed on, and the flexibility that might provide to business improvement districts in those areas as to how they might craft their own solution to this otherwise kind of baseline ordinance. But I'd like a little more time to do that, too. The first I saw this, and I'm still kind of processing it was today, and I haven't communicated with them about this kind of new option that could be attached to it. So, I would also support a layover to provide the time to do that and really think this through and make sure we're getting it right. And I think there has been a lot of research in terms of, you know, what our best practice is across the country, and it's my understanding that it really varies widely. But I did request also a list of those cities, just so I can process that, too, so we can have that in our consideration here, because as one testifier said, there's a lot of cities who have done this for a lot longer and a lot better than us, but I'm pleased to see that we are catching up. So, those would be my thoughts today, and I would also support a short layover, just to make sure we're following those best practices.
Thank you. Mr. Grenat.
Thank you for catching my generation, since it still doesn't work.
Yes, they are. We got you. You got you, yeah.
Mr. Keegan?
Kelly Keegan, 4655 Hickory Street.
What would you sense the feelings of the association as their leader would be if this got laid over again?
They would not be surprised.
Or thrilled.
Or thrilled. I really think we've got it, this ordinance, where we need it to be. There are, with these amendments, it's built in where if a business improvement district or a homeowner association wants something, wants to exclude or regulate in some way, shape, or form, that's there. And if there's issues, we will, you know, we want to, as a group, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be good tenants, we want to be good citizens. And if there's a problem, we want to address it, you know, if somebody's parking, if their generator's off, you know, we're going to be the ones that take care of our own. And that review committee is, I think that would be very helpful, and I just don't want to see us overregulate something that it may not be a problem right away.
All right, thank you. I've always believed, I don't think any of our ordinances have true, clear finish lines in any aspect. But in that process, there are some lines that I worry about, and one of those, with everything that's been done so far, is that line crossing where we're starting the nickel and dime an ordinance or an industry or something to death. And that bothers me. I've seen it in the last 15 and a half years here, and it creates a negative atmosphere, whether it's the general public, and I'm sure that it will with some, the industry, whatever we're working with in this particular case, the mobile food trucks. And it's been mentioned that we've have spent a lot of time on this, looking at best practices across the country, accumulating those, and see what fits and works for Omaha. I mean, I think it was 2006 when it really started to, the first food truck went and applied at the Health Department, is it, does that ring a bell?
2010.
2010.
2010.
Oh, it was 2006 that I started my crusade with food trucks in my district, that I knew, or I knew for a fact we're not in compliance with the health regulations. And it took several years. I've said this before. Finally, bring them around to where folks not only wanted them, trusted them, were looking forward to having that cuisine available to them. And they're all out there now, this has become a big thing, an industry in Omaha. Omaha's growing, that should grow, the food truck industry, I believe, should grow with it. But we've got to start somewhere. And if we can put that into play now, we're still working, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Thompson, but we're still looking at things that we voted yes on from 15 and a half years ago, and making amendments and tweaking and that. Nothing that says in the law that we can't do it with this particular ordinance. So, I guess before I get mounted in a pulpit here, I'll stop. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson.
Yes, sir. You have stated more than once on the record that you are for the restaurant tax, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you were here when the council voted that down, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
At that time, I had made a statement that I'm not sure if I would support anything at all, because I felt that government had inserted itself in giving one portion of the business an economic advantage over another. I thought that made us very, you know, liable. And so, at that time, I thought that I wouldn't be supporting that. But since then, I got to thinking that there's no reason to punish you and your organization for what we didn't accomplish. And so, I'll go on record by saying that I'll continue to keep the two issues separate, which they should have been all along, and that I'm reversing my decision and not holding your progress back because of that. And I hear you saying today that you think we have enough on the table now to start with.
That's correct.
And that you'd like to see a vote, up or down today?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to not play politics and give you support for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
And I would agree with Councilman Grenat, that I think I started, I recall starting to talk about the food trucks at least maybe 10 months ago, I don't know if, Cassie, if you could come back up? Because I, we said that maybe lay this over so that, as to not rush this, but I believe I had a meeting with you, and I met with, I believe, with Kelly, and I want to say it was last March, April, is that about right?
Cassie Pavin, mayor's office. The first, I went back through, I mean, we've had a lot of discussions with this, particularly in the downtown area, and as the industry has grown for well over a year now, we would receive complaints, whether they were coming in through parking enforcement or through OPD of trucks parking in places that were causing public safety hazards next to intersections, or a generator kind of out in the street, and really, how does that, how are they regulated? So, as that began to continue to become an issue, we really started looking at it. And when I look back through my records, I think the very first really rough draft that we started putting pen to paper was back in February of this year, when we really started putting some stuff together. I know we kind of took a look at it, took a step back, knew that that really maybe wasn't quite right, did some more investigation. We had a large group get together, and Councilman Grenat and Councilman Thompson, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was in maybe June of this year, does that sound about right? Where there were multiple city departments that were there, we had had discussions with the Food Truck Association, we had had discussions with the Improvement District, and really took a look at it. So, it's been going on for several months, so I'm not sure that the word's rushing something through quite right. I know we, I have been on record during the discussion about the restaurant tax, about where we were at and when we were going to be seeing, when the council was going to be seeing something in terms of the regulations. And I kept telling you we're close, because we were close, we were still negotiating, we were still working through a lot of different issues that needed to be discussed, that needed to be had. And finally, we got there, and we introduced something to this council back in September. So, I would say definitely a lot of work has gone in over the last six to nine months on this ordinance itself. And in terms of the, you know, looking at best practices, I do have those sheets, I'd be happy to hand them to you and to take a look at. There's multiple cities. One of the packets was something that was put together, not by City of Omaha staff, but was put together by another jurisdiction, as they went through another, one of the sheets is something that I put through, as I was going through some of the other cities in addition to ones that were on that list. And as Councilman Festerson said, and I told him earlier today when I was briefing him, it really is all over the board on a number of different issues. And I think to the point where national organizations are really starting to look and help compile best practices, such as the National League of Cities, and what does that look like in terms? Because we're not, we're not unique to this situation. We're one of several communities across the country that continue to see this industry grow and thrive and have spinoff business, and I think it's something that we can do to help support.
Okay. And thank you, and I appreciate that, only because, and what I have said, I know, Councilman Thompson and I, Dr. Thompson and I disagree a little bit, actually think the restaurant tax and these regulations do have something to do with each other. Because if we were to overregulate the food trucks and basically ban them from the downtown area and make it impossible for them to, then they shouldn't be treated the same as a restaurant, because we don't, we don't limit the number of restaurants that can be built next to each other. We're not saying you can't, you know, put a, I think we talked earlier, build a Mexican restaurant next to an Italian restaurant, there's, or you can't say you can't build an Italian restaurant next to another Italian restaurant. So, we don't regulate the brick and mortars. So, the reason I voted no to the restaurant tax, I do think it should be applied fairly, but I wanted to make sure that the regulations we had, that were going to apply to the food trucks, were going to be fair. And I actually, in looking at these amendments, believe that you've put a lot of work into this. I appreciate the work that the Food Truck Association has put in, and the BIDs, Miss, Molly, thank you very much, and for the time you've put into thinking about it. So, I think there have been enough people that have discussed this and went back and forth, and you've made multiple amendments, that it's probably at this time, time to just pass something, amend it later. And I had said, if I felt that it was fair regulations, I would support then applying the restaurant tax to the food trucks. So, I do think, I just felt that this needed to be passed first, so that we could ensure that we weren't overregulating the food trucks, and now that it should be applied fairly. So, I guess with that, I would move to approve the ordinance and the two amendments. I guess I moved the amendments today.
Which amendments are you talking?
The special district, sorry.
The amendment that the administration had said.
The amendment that the administration, the section 11-342 special districts.
The special districts, and then there should be 343, which is included in that, that would have the annual review?
Yes, the 343 periodic review. Section 11, 343 periodic review.
Second. Is that a motion?
Yes.
So, you moved in second, it removed the motion, the amendment, the administration amendment?
Yeah, it's C, 48C.
48C. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Several weeks ago, we were, I think, at a little bit of an impasse, and I truly like the direction we have gone, or that you're taking us. I'm in a little bit of a quandary, because some people say that maybe we ought to take a little bit more of a look at this. Since nobody's being fined or ticketed, if they were, then I'd say, whoa, we got to, you know, react to this, you know? But I must say, I do like the direction that this is moving, or has moved to, to this point. But I, I mean, I'm not saying it has to be done today also, I mean, I'm just sort of in that quandary right now, so I still, before I vote, I still have to make my mind come to some type of resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just add, I mean, I think to my original comments that I indicated interest in what we're doing here, and I think, as Mr. Pauls noted, the amendment we heard today does, I think, have some possibilities, and I like the flexibility it provides of BID. But to my original point, that's not even on the agenda. We had trouble just now moving which amendment to move, because we didn't know if there was one or two. I first saw this amendment and this idea at 11:30 today, and I'm not comfortable voting on something by 2:00, nor, and I'm pretty confident, I can say, that nobody has even talked about this amendment with people in Benson, or Dundee, or the other business improvement districts, that we have this new power, presumably, to regulate how this works. So, I'm not saying I wouldn't approve this concept, you know, with a short layover, I very well might. But I'm not comfortable approving something today that we've seen for two hours. But I'm not comfortable approving something today that we've seen for two hours and hasn't been vetted with our constituents, or at least not my constituents. So, I won't be supporting it today, and I would hope that we do layover at least for a couple of weeks.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment C? No further lights roll, oh, yeah, no further lights roll call.
Festerson?
No.
Gernant?
Yes.
Jerem?
Pass.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
Mr. Jerem?
No.
It's postponed over for two weeks.
Second.
Moved and seconded to layover two weeks. No further lights roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernant?
No.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
No.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
48 is laid over two weeks for this writ. Item number 49, ordinance to change city council district boundaries pursuant to the rest of state statutes. A is an amendment requested by the Law Department.
Public hearing on item 49 was held. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 49. No lights roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernant?
I've had enough time to review this.
Yes.
Jerem? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
49 is passed, seven to zero. Resolution, item number 50, resolution that the attached HDR Exarban Village Zone Six tax improvised financing redevelopment project plan for the redevelopment site located northeast of 67th and Francis Street proposing the construction of a 10-story office tower as a new global HDR headquarters recommending the city participates in the allocation of TIF as hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 50 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Again, before you is the HDR TIF headquarters site in the Exarban Village area. And what I wanted to do is just give a little brief history to help understand the importance of this particular site being redeveloped and moving this TIF project moving forward. It is the former site of the Exarban Village, or excuse me, the Exarban Race Track site. And as a result, back in the 2000s, early, early 2000s, mid 2000s, there was a vision, of course, to redevelop that entire site and the general area. And the Exarban Village redevelopment plan was contemplated, and in that plan were about nine redevelopment zones that you see here. And you've seen this, I'm sure, time and time again for various number of years. But what it shows are the various number of zones, and each of those zones represented either one or multiple projects at that particular zone. Each zone had an allocation for public improvements that they were to contribute towards, and these are, were public improvements that occurred within the village area and then surrounding the area to help with egress, ingress, egress into the site and around the site and help prepare for redevelopment. Also, each of those zones was expected to utilize TIF to help redevelop the site. And I have just a, so here, let me go this way. So, this is headed north. This is 67th Street. This is West Center Road. And what you see shaded in the light blue is Exarban Zone Six. It is the last zone to be redeveloped in this particular village plan. Just about every site around it has been redeveloped. It's about eight square, or excuse me, eight acres, the total site. However, the HDR headquarters site is about four, a little over four acres. And what you see kind of outlined in yellow represents the actual site that is a part of this particular TIF project. And just as a note, HDR is the tenant in this building, not the owner of the building. And then I have just a few renderings to show you the actual site itself. So, again, this is looking north, 67th Street. So, this is the site plan layout for the 10-story Class A office and then retail that would be on the ground floor. And then this, this space here would be the garage, parking structure of about 1,090 stalls, and then retail here. The retail that's planned for the ground floor of the office building is about 18,000 square feet. The retail planned at the ground floor of the parking structure is about 7,800 square feet. And then there's this common alleyway that's formed as well that would be activated with various retailing activities. Here's a rendering of the site. So, looking north here is, you can see from the red brick where the Gordmans site is. So, we're looking at 67th Street, looking north. So, this is the south elevation. Kind of looking northwest at the structure, and here's where that retailing would be, which is basically facing the alleyway. Looking northeast, basically at that corner of 67th and Francis. So, that's kind of the site and the layout. As with this particular site and most sites in the Exarban Village redevelopment area, we're talking vacant land that needed to be redeveloped. And so, therefore, we, this particular site is vacant, but it had a partial surface parking lot. So, there's going to be site prep such as clearing and grading of the site. That parking lot has to be demoed to make way for this particular structure. There were a couple of questions, I think, that were brought up to me at the pre-council to talk about TIF eligible uses. The typical TIF eligible uses which are outlined in our TIF guidelines involve public infrastructure as the first right of use of TIF funds. Then there's acquisition costs. Then there's site preparation, which involves demolition. It involves grading, surcharging, special foundations, and other predevelopment costs. Also, there are utility extensions and connections that are involved, especially with new construction sites as well as rehabilitation sites. And then there are rehabilitation costs. Those really come into play when you're talking about a lot of historic structures or historic preservation. And sometimes it may not be a building that's on the national registry, but it may be just an older building that is being rehabbed. So, those are some of the typical eligible costs. For this particular project, the TIF eligible uses are acquisition costs, and our TIF committee, we reviewed all of the costs. And because the site is about eight acres, but however, the HDR particular site is only about half, maybe about 51% of the total site, the acquisition cost was, that was allowable, was reduced down to about 2.2, almost 2.3 million. Site prep costs such as special foundations, and the special foundations are allowable due to soil conditions in the entire Exarban Village area. Many other TIF projects did incur this as well. Grading and then stormwater management. Stormwater management is one of the costs that are incurred by just about every TIF project as a result of public improvements and Public Works requirement. Various public improvements, site utilities, connections, and then other predevelopment costs that were a part of this particular project. The total project cost is nearly 114 million. The amount of the TIF is just over $15 million. And that TIF represents about 13.2% of the total project cost. That percent is basically just a function of looking at, here's your total cost, here's your TIF amount and your total cost, and that TIF again is based on how much of that value will the TIF project support in terms of a TIF loan? The, this particular project, as I had mentioned, all the zones are required to pay back to the city for public infrastructure costs that were incurred for developing the entire site. This particular zone had to pay back to the city for work that Public Works had incurred of 580,000, a little over 580,000. So, that does come back to the city as a result of this project moving forward. And then the last thing I would also say about this project specifically is that it will rescind the TIF redevelopment project plan that was approved in March for the contemplated HDR headquarters for the downtown area. So, this project does rescind that. And when the agreement comes forward later, that will come before you again, there will be more specifics that will definitely clarify and rescind that particular project. So, with that, I would just say this project does qualify and meet our TIF guidelines and our community development law. Due to various reasons, it was definitely contemplated that this particular project and this site would utilize TIF for redevelopment. And with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Mr. President, members of the council, city staff, I'm Jay Naughtle, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. Very pleased to be here today. I must say that about 14 years ago, when we started to think about Exarban Village and dream a little bit, we always felt that what we refer to as Zone Six could be the last piece, and we had some pretty bold ideas. We couldn't be more pleased that we were ready when HDR chose to make a different decision for their headquarters in Omaha. And most importantly, we're very pleased that their headquarters will remain in Omaha and that they'll grow. As Bridget mentioned, Exarban Village has, was originally organized to make TIF available to all the projects in the village. Bridget mentioned nine zones. I think there's been 16 or 17 projects that have taken place in the village. And the TIF request here, the, the types of expenses that the TIF will be applied to, and the protocol to reimburse, to actually have Exarban Future Trust reimburse the city for some of the costs that the city shared in is consistent with what we've done all the way through. I won't take any more time, but I'm certainly available to answer any questions, and we appreciate your favorable action today.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, and I will be making a motion to approve. But the, a couple of things I want to ask Mr. Naughtle if he could. First, the difference between this site and the downtown site is about 5 million less in TIF, as I understand the application.
I am not
Maybe it's Bridget.
Totally qualified to speak to the downtown site, but I believe order of magnitude, that's, that's about right.
All right. So, going from 20 million to 15 million, is that, Bridget, you're nodding your head?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, yes, it's going from 20 million from the downtown site to 15 million here. And as a perspective of total cost, it was about 152 million downtown, and here we're talking nearly 114 million.
And some of the people who asked me about the, well, why would we need TIF here? I've tried to remind that the city, when this was, area was constructed, advanced the significant portion of the public infrastructure development costs for Exarban Future Trust, and then as projects have come in in the different zones, there's payback from the Future Trust to the city of a portion of those TIF proceeds. Is that correct, Mr. President?
That is correct.
And with Zone Six, where this project is to be constructed, with this payment of the 500 and, 500-plus thousand, that will complete the final reimbursement to the city for the public infrastructure cost.
That is correct.
And pretty much complete the buildout of the zones, with the exception of there's some small parcels that are reserved both on, to the north side of this project as well as to the southeast on some other smaller lots.
I think there's a total of six remaining undeveloped sites throughout the entire village after this.
I want to congratulate you on a wonderful design. And, you know, in terms of the buildout and what Exarban Village will look like when completed, it's, I've heard from people all around the Exarban Village neighborhood, and there's a lot of excitement about it. And there's even talk, I've heard from many people who work at HDR about relocating to the village to find housing, which is exciting too. So, congratulations to you. And the last question is, is when will dirt fly?
Very, very soon.
Answered as only a developer can. Motion approved.
Second.
Dr. Thompson?
Yes, so Mr. Naughtle, I too want to say thank you for investing in Exarban, and it's been a great turnaround from what it used to be into the vision that it's turned into be. And without your leadership, it wouldn't have happened. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Melton?
And I just wanted to note, I think this is one of my love that you've accomplished a compliment, the area, you've done the area very well. And I too have gotten, you know, my best of emails in regards to what you were giving, giving your
Is your mic on?
Mike, if this is just Is that it?
No.
I'll just speak loud. Oh, there, okay. But I also wanted to call attention to the fact that in addition to this being a lesser amount than if it was downtown, it looks like there's a number of jobs that will be created with this as well, which I know is in our packet, but we didn't necessarily touch. And is it your understanding that there'll be at least another 200 jobs that will be added in addition to the, I think, the 900 employees that HDR already has?
Yes, that's, again, I think order of magnitude, that's right. And I also might add that this project provides almost 26,000 square feet of retail space that will be populated with new businesses and bring more jobs as well. So, there's, there's sort of a multiplier there. And keep in mind, this is the first phase of Zone Six development. Zone Six will continue with a few more projects, two multifamily projects that we, I think we'll be here fairly soon to talk about those. And then over a little bit of time, there is a second office site that's being reserved for HDR's future expansion, should it be necessary. And that can accommodate another 600 to 800 people over time.
Okay. And I just, I think that that's important, that that kind of growth, that it's, it's going to generate immediate growth then in Exarban, but then you're also looking at future growth, which is already being planned.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I, I think it's, I think it's wonderful. I'm really glad that HDR found this spot and kind of what I guess I would consider the heart of the city at this point in time between west and east Omaha. So, I think Exarban Village is the perfect place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. And congratulations, Jay. This is a great project, as everyone has already noted. And congratulations on the overall development as well. So, we served on Exarban Future Trust together 12 years ago?
Mm-hmm.
When this was nothing, right? So, it's been amazing to see that progress, and particularly the last couple of years, how it's really accelerated, which was amazingly the vision at the time, right? It's been so successful. The only question I've gotten on this development, not to bring up a sore topic, but is parking. But for very different reasons than the downtown situation, I think the reason I got the question this time is because Exarban has been so successful. So, they're just wanting to make sure that there is adequate parking now for the new intensity and concentration of employees as well as all the other mixed uses that are happening there. So, I just wanted to note that the parking stall garage is 1,090 stalls, right? And is it entirely private, or will it be public at times too, or how would that work?
As is all the parking in Exarban Village, a good majority of the structure will be available after hours and on the weekends. So, a large majority of it. And keep in mind, this is just the first phase of the parking structure in this block. Over time, there can be upwards of 2,000 parking stalls in the block. As other buildings are added, we will add proportionately more parking.
Okay. So, the philosophy is the same as with the other garages there? So, the philosophy is the same as with the other garages there, will be open for everyone's use and be compatible that way. Great, thanks, congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Garnett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Every time the word Exarban is mentioned, you probably noted when you came down in front how intently I was looking at the overall picture. And I'll be honest, when I look at that, being a lifelong resident of Omaha, I remember what was there. And my dad was an avid horse racing fan. I won't relay what aspect of that, but he was an avid horse racing fan and it's also a spot where I learned how to drive, just like a lot of young folks back then. So, it has considerable amount of, of memories. Professional basketball was there, professional hockey, public ice skating was there. Curling, curling, yeah. So, what, my, my point is, is what happening now, and I'm sure my, my dad would be appreciative and happy to see that, is that quality of life is still being maintained in residential, no harm to existing neighborhoods, growth in business, entertainment, all of those things, and just in a different form that Exarban offered at one time, has a positive multiplier, if you will. So, again, add my congratulations to this and everybody that's been involved in making Exarban Village what it is today and what it's going to be in the future. Now, I do have one question. I know it's just, maybe we could kill this rumor right now. It's, it's not going to be the city of Exarban. It's going to stay as Exarban Village, it's not...
We'll leave that to the Village of Boys Town.
Leave those to the Village people?
Of Boys Town.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Jay, I was just sitting here, just smiling to myself, I guess. I guess we've come a long way from one specific place. I guess that's sort of inside with you and I, but we've, we've come a long way from there and my congratulations to you as well. This is, this is a, this is going to be a really great project. Thank you. Has there been, Mr., oh, you've already, has there been moved and seconded?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. No further lights roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yeah.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Fifty is adopted, seven to zero. Ordinance is on second reading. Item number fifty-one, ordinance approving in a local cooperation agreement with Bellevue, Sarpy County, Papillion, Missouri River Natural Resources District to participate in the maintenance of the Missouri River levee system and avoid the loss of Federal Emergency Management Agency accreditation.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-one is today, proponents please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Fifty-two is an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with passport parking for the implementation of the on-street parking management system.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-two is today, proponents please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item fifty-three, ordinance to grant a permanent easement on the property near one hundred and forty-fourth and Eagle Run Drive to MUD.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-three is today, proponents please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item fifty-four, ordinance to prove the acceptance of and authorize the distribution of the state homeland security grant to provide first responders, emergency response communities in Douglas, Sarpy and Orsondon Counties.
Public hearing on agenda item fifty-four is today, proponents please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item fifty-five, ordinance to approve a three-year agreement with the Nebraska Humane Society for Animal Control Services.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-five is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Nancy Hints, eighty-nine twenty-nine Fort Street, Omaha. I am the new president and CEO of the Nebraska Humane Society and here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. And are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item fifty-six, or...
Oh, we had a light, I'm sorry. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a quick question on this. For Nancy, but then also finance, finance, the seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars anticipated in two thousand and seventeen, that is what we budgeted in the approved budget, right?
Steve Curtis City Finance, that's correct.
Great. And then Nancy, welcome again to your new position. We look forward to working with you and I'll just ask this question, which probably applies more to the second one than the first one here, but with the amount for providing the seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in two thousand and seventeen and then the second item, which would also generate revenue, that additional, that increase in the revenue that follows that all goes to the Humane Society, right?
Yes.
Okay. And will that, will the two of them be enough to offset the costs you need to provide the services you do to the city?
I'm going to say we hope so. We've seen an increase in our services for the community and for, just for example, I can tell you that the calls that we're receiving, where we're responding to and sending officers out to handle them has increased even the last calendar year by eight percent. So, we are predicting an uptick in servicing, you know, the community. So, we've budgeted, we're being very fiscally responsible and frugal with what we have, so we will see when we get there, but there definitely is an uptick.
Nancy, would you re-identify yourself, just your name?
Yes, Nancy Hints, H-I-N-T-Z.
So, it may not cover fully the, what you're doing, which has been the case in the past, but you feel confident it's enough to get to where you need to be for now within this contract?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you and we appreciate all you are doing for the citizens to do animal control and Humane Society services. A lot of folks don't realize the public safety component of what you do for the city and so I just wanted to point that out when you had the opportunity to be here.
Well, thank you so much. I'll have to tell you sometime about my ride along with animal control.
Ah, okay.
So, I did that, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Nancy. One of the things that I don't think has been widely publicized and probably because of the professionalism of your team, but there, there was a very big news story earlier this fall or late summer with the bats, some of which had apparently rabies and things and I think I've heard there was a dramatic uptick in calls that your agency fielded within the budgeted funds that the city provided and not a dollar more came from us to help you meet that service demand load. So, while I don't have a check to give you here today, I do want to at least publicly recognize you for that extra rising to the call and above and beyond without any additional resources provided to you, your team, and thank you for that.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Mr. Garnett?
Thanks, Mr. President. My welcome is on. Well, Nancy, thank, thank you for, I see marks in the audience too. Well, I've experienced that. I do have a question for Mr. Curtis and this is for the benefit of folks that don't have access to the internet or get a, a copy of the agenda. The funds that are paying for these allocations in seventeen, eighteen and nineteen come from the Keno Lottery Fund, is that correct, Mr. Curtis?
I'm sorry, I was looking for my budget, I appear, it seems to have disappeared. What was your question again?
The funds for this, these allocations in twenty seventeen, eighteen and nineteen are specified from the Keno Lottery Fund, is that correct?
Steve Curtis City Finance, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights, next item.
Item fifty-six, ordinance to amend section six dash one oh five to increase the animal fee to licensed dogs and cats by one dollar.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-six is today, proponents please.
Nancy Hints, eighty-nine twenty-nine Fort Street. I am the new president and CEO of the Nebraska Humane Society.
Do you have any comment or just?
No.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Pursuant to City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda items number fifty-seven through seventy shall be held on the third reading pursuant to City Council Rule Seven C, the public hearing on agenda items number seventy-one through seventy-six shall be held on the second reading.
Mr. President, I, I will be making a motion to adjourn, but before I do, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge some scouts that came in today from my district, if they could please rise and be recognized, welcome to the Omaha City Council. And if you were to stick around afterwards, I'll come out and meet you. Motion adjourned.
Roll call?
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We stand adjourned at three forty p.m.